Is the staff ready? I call to order the August 22nd, 2017 meeting of the Arvada Planning Commission. Ms. Brown, would you please call the roll?
Well, yes, I will. Jenny Wolfschlag, President Michael Griffith,
Here.
David Garth,
Here.
T.O. Owens,
Here.
Patricia Connell,
Here.
Doug McGee,
Here.
And Steve Hannan.
Here.
We've had the August 8th notes and minutes submitted. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved as submitted. We have no general business and no reports, so it's time for the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand. It's time for petitions and communications. At this time, we'll hear anyone who may address the commission regarding items that are not listed as public hearings on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the commission? Seeing none. At this time, I'd like to explain the procedures for public hearings. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation. After the presentation, I will ask for those in favor of the applicant to speak, and then those opposed to the application. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. After all the testimony's been heard, the public input portion of the hearing will be closed, and we'll have questions from members of the commission. I'd like now to swear in anyone who wishes to speak in front of the commission tonight. So, anyone who wishes to speak, please stand. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in the matters before this commission are the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please answer "I do." Thank you. The public hearing we have tonight is for the residents at Allison Park rezoning, Z2017001, PDP2017001, and PDPP, the plat, 2017-0001. Staff, are there any posting and notification requirements?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are three requirements. One is a written notice to property owners within 400 feet of the site. One is a sign posted on the property. And one is a notice published in the paper. All three forms have been completed, and we have affidavits to that effect.
Thank you very much. The staff report, posting log, and affidavit of mailing are made a permanent part of the record. The planning commission has also received a letter from Ms. Susan Tiktion. We will enter that, and I'll mark it as Exhibit A. Is there a representative of the, from the applicant present? Would you please come to the podium? Rob, do you have a presentation from the staff?
Yes, just real quickly. The applicant is proposing to rezone the approximately three acre parcel from RI, which is one and two-family residential, to PUDR for a townhome project with a density of approximately 11.8 units per acre. The project includes 35 two- and three-story townhomes. Each unit would include a two-car attached garage. Additionally, there's 14 guest spaces provided as part of the project. Approximately 33 percent of the site will be landscaped. There are three modifications requested from the land development code as part of this project. The first is a reduction in the onsite guest parking from the required 18 spaces to 14. However, five on-street spaces will be created for, as part of this project, along Allison Street, and that will lead to a total of 19 spaces on or adjacent to this parcel. Additionally, the land development code requires that when there's a multifamily building adjacent to single-family structures, that the setback from the property line be equal to the height of the building from the adjacent single-family lot line. In this case, on the northeast corner of the site, there is a single-family home. However, the closest unit to that home is approximately 44 feet west of Allison Street, and therefore, it is placed, the unit is placed behind the living area of that existing home, so that there is no building directly south of it. Then finally, there is a reduction request for the front setback for one unit. That's a reduction to 20 feet from the required 25-foot setback. However, 20-foot setback is not unusual along Allison. In all, about 54 percent of the properties along Allison, between 52nd and 55th, have a setback of 20 feet or less. Staff does recommend approval of the project with those modifications and with the condition identified in the staff report. And Steve Wilkie is here to give the applicant's presentation.
Mr. Wilkie, would you please state your name and spell it for the record, and give us your address?
My name's Stephen Wilkie, spelt W-I-L-K-I-E. I live in Arvada at 15816 West 74th Place. And I'm the president and owner of Royal Oak.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to share with you this project. We're excited about it. We purchased the property about 11 months ago, and we've been working with the city planners to come up with a plan that's acceptable and workable. And we're really privileged to share this with you this evening and ask for your recommendation. The site is just a little under three acres. And for the longest, well, it hasn't had a structure on it. There was a little sort of a horse shed or something like that. But from what I can tell, when I purchased it, it was used for sort of dumping a lot of trash. And so, over the last few months, we've been cleaning up. The site has some challenges. It has some ditches that run through it. One of them, the bayou ditch diagonally right through the property. So, we've been working with the ditch company and the city to figure out how we can solve that. And we feel we've come up with a very workable solution that will basically underground that ditch, and therefore, not needing to maintain it and clear it, because there's a lot of debris that we pulled out of there, concrete, bicycles, all sorts of stuff that was in that ditch. But, let me go to the slide here. Next one. Okay. So, I think you're all familiar of where the site is. It's west of the Home Depot there on Allison Street. It's, we feel it's really conveniently located for the light rail and for shops there on Wasworth. And as I said, we've got a product that we feel will be a much-needed product in this current marketplace. So, here's a site plan. We've called it Allison Park because we're centering these homes on the park at the front there. So, as you're driving up and down Allison Street, you'll see this open green space with some trees. And then, when we come onto the rendering in a few slides, you'll see the fronts of the homes. You won't see, as you're driving up and down and you're looking into the neighborhood, you won't see garages unless you're, you know, in a specific angle. But the bulk of what you'll be looking at as you're coming up and down the streets is a real nice architecture around this park. And we have some green space behind all the properties and in front of the middle ones there at the west of the property. We've basically got two types of homes. We, these are single-family attached homes. They're 2,000 square feet, two-car garage, three-to-four-bedroom homes. We have two types of product. The first, we call the Henley Courtyard Homes. These homes, I'll actually just go back one slide. If you look at the, on the slide there, the yellow homes are the Henleys. And these homes are alley-loaded. So, if you were coming home to your home, you would drive in the back. You have a two-car garage at the back, and you could walk through a covered breezeway to your home, and you go past your own private courtyard. That little brown box in there is a courtyard. So, that's why we're calling them courtyard homes. They're very private. People like outdoor living here in Colorado for obvious reasons, and so, we've deliberately incorporated that in these homes. So, again, the, next slide, this one. So, as you're looking at them now from Allison Street, you're not seeing any garage doors. You're seeing this lovely architecture, a lot of brick, timbers, a sort of a cottage feel with those peak roofs. And these are two-story homes that will front Allison Street. The, going back to the site plan, at the north and south, we have also a three-bedroom, 2,000-square-foot townhome, except these are three-story as opposed to two-story. And they have a garage tucked under at the front, a tandem garage. These are the Oxford's. And to incorporate outdoor living with these homes, we've given each home a covered deck on the second floor, and then, an open deck on the third floor. And homeowners would have the choice of having their decks at the front or the back. So, if you see there, there's the two homes that don't have decks. Those decks will be on the back. Deliberately wanted to play with the architecture to not have all the homes the same cookie cutter. And so, depending on what type of home you choose, whether you want a two-story courtyard, sort of more traditional cottage style, or a little bit of contemporary here, but still with some traditional architecture. So, again, the Henley Courtyards and the Oxford Terrace Homes. These homes will be for sale. And our target price, we're thinking, are in the high 400s, approaching $500,000. So, I think when initially you hear the word "townhome," you know, some people think condos, you know, that type. These are single-family homes that happen to be attached. And these are luxury townhomes. I mean, they're 2,000 square feet. And so, our target audience or buyers are probably twofold. One would be the sort of profile of the people that are moving into Colorado, you know, the mid-20s to mid-30s that want to commute into Denver on the light rail, don't want a lot of yard maintenance and home maintenance. But I also see these homes being popular with the older generation that are looking to downsize, that also don't want that maintenance of a big home, but still want the luxury finishes of a, you know, luxury kitchen, nice big master bathroom, sorry, master bedroom with an en suite. So, really nice finishes. Somebody referred to these as potentially what we call "lock-and-goes," where, you know, people in their retirement years that don't want the maintenance could, you know, live in one of these homes and then lock them up and go traveling for a month and come back and, you know, not have weeds growing up everywhere. If you do have a pet or something, you just go for a walk. We've got these parks, so we feel we've provided for that. A real sense of community, particularly with that park. So, in terms of, you know, I've talked values, high fours, right around the $500,000. In talking to realtors in the area, they feel that these prices will enhance the home values surrounding them. Particularly, if we're able to get $500,000 for a 2,000-square-foot home, you know, price per square foot, that should increase people's values. So, we don't feel in any way that this is negative at all to the community. We've got a lot of people that have expressed an interest in these homes. We've got a waiting list of people that are very interested in buying these homes. And I think in the area, I think there's a shortage of for-sale attached homes. You know, we've got a lot of apartments that people can rent, lease, but these homes will be available for sale. So, I'm available for questions. I'm going to hand over to Debbie Klisis from Gene Engineering, and she can talk through some of the more technical pieces.
Can you please give us your name and spell it and our address for the record?
I'm Debbie Klisis, K-L-I-S-I-S, and I'm with Gene Engineering at 5690 Webster Street in Arvada. So, as Steve said, the technical aspects are, as you are aware, there is a PUDR zoning that we're requesting. So, we're requesting the rezoning, the approval of the PDP, and the preliminary plat. As far as our development standards, Rob did a pretty good job of iterating those. I just wanted to say, yes, we're three acres. We have 35 units with a density of 11.8 DU per acre. The setbacks, the minimum setback table shows our 20-foot setback to Allison Street. And I did also want to mention that that is to only one building, and it's a side setback. And we've added some extra architectural features to help that not be a blank wall there. And the parking, as Rob said, 14 units, 14 spaces onsite, but also five spaces in the street. And then, Allison Street will actually be expanding the street, so a parking bump out, not just on-street parking, but actually bumping out parking bays, similar to what's north of there on Allison Street at Water Tower. And also, one of the things with the PUDR zoning is that you provide additional amenities. And we think the parks are definitely a plus on this project. We have 33 percent open space, which is more than required. So, on the staff findings, just, I think you have this in your packet, but our PDP is consistent with a comprehensive plan. It does provide a substantial benefit to the city. It does comply with the design standards. We did the best, we did what we could with the parking and provided extra on-street. It is consistent with the intent of the PUD. It does provide street connections and sidewalks. We are putting additional sidewalk on Allison and making that the city-preferred standard for Allison Street, and providing sufficient public safety and transportation. And these townhome units will be compatible with future land use. So, on our next side, the proposal is within the community interest. It complies with the zoning, the PUDR. Adequate city services exist, and the developer will comply with all staff recommendations. And we humbly ask for your approval of Allison Park PDP, PUDR. And with that, I will close our presentation.
Thank you very much. It's now time for public comment. I'll now open the hearing for comments from the public. First, those who are in favor of the application? Did you guys get sworn in? Okay, please, both of you stand up, and I'll swear you in. Oh, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against the application? All right, seeing none, I don't see any reason to have rebuttal. At this time, I will close the public input portion of the hearing, and now open the hearing to discussions and questions and comments from members of the planning commission. Mr. Hannan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions. The abandoned ditch, that's scary to me, since, you know, the rights of ditch are slightly below God. It's strange to have an abandoned ditch and not be able to find anybody. How do we deal with that?
The applicant may be able to help out with this. But my understanding is there's still one person who has water rights, but they have not utilized those water rights in quite some time. So, you know, technically, it is still, there are still water rights out there. And that's why they are constructing a piece to kind of make sure that can still occur in the future.
And I think you're referring to the court grave ditch?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, we've not been able to find anybody that has ever wanted to use the rights or... But there is a possibility that someone in the future could. So, as we're reconstructing the bayou ditch to go around the property, so, the bayou ditch right now cuts diagonally through the property from southwest to northeast, and we're going to take it straight east and then north. And at that corner where there is a pipe under Allison for the court graves, we're going to provide a stubout. So, that in the future, if anybody wanted to, there's a pipe there with a stubout, and they can connect it and use it.
Okay, good, thank you. Guest parking, we have a few less. I know in the Water Tower area, since our son used to live there, it's impossible to find parking, and they have more than they're supposed to. So, what do we think on that?
We did push them to get as many parking spaces onsite as we could, and that's where they got to, the 14 spaces. There, again, are five that will be provided on-street along Allison, and you can see kind of the bulb out. And we felt that made it feel, although they're not directly dedicated to this project, it makes them feel like they are somewhat related to this project. Additionally, I've been out there several times, at different times of the day and evening, and I have not seen that the parking was an issue in this area. The projects across the street seem to have adequate parking as well.
Okay, we're talking about reducing setbacks, so traffic, is that going to have any issues for visibility?
In terms of the site distance from the access points?
Right.
No, the site distance requirement of 300 feet is accommodated in this particular plan. So, any trees or shrubs cannot obstruct the view of motorists exiting the site, for example. So, nothing that would grow higher than two and a half feet or grow below nine feet in terms of trees.
Excellent. One last thing. We got a letter today from Susan talking about the impacts of neighbors on construction. Is there any requirements for not blocking driveways and pulling into driveways to turn around during a construction time?
There isn't any requirements in terms of the streets itself, right at the connection. It's discouraged, obviously, for construction activity to impact neighbors. But, you know, in terms of where people are working, and it's temporary, essentially. And we do try to notify the folks who are involved in construction activity that they should keep that impact at minimum.
Excellent, thank you.
No other questions?
Thank you.
Commissioner McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, a couple of questions for staff. I just wanted to confirm for the replacement trees, because it looks like the only trees that exist on the property now are the ones around the perimeter. And so, it's 172 caliber inches that are going onsite, but the numbers didn't add up in the staff report. So, but the landscaping plan was accurate with 172.5 inches. But page six of this staff report, if you could just, is that the number, 172 inches? Then they're doing almost 80 inches off-site in a public park? Maybe the Griffith Station Park, the new park down the street, or...
Yes, they will be either planting trees or paying a fee for the additional caliber.
But it's 172 that will be on the site, and you can see it kind of concentrated on the east and the west of the property?
Correct.
Okay. So, can you check that number? Because I couldn't get it to add up on page six. It looked like the numbers was flipped.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I would check that.
And since we've got this site plan showing, you know, all of the, most of the vegetation is on the west, and then some on the east. And is it these, the easements for the ditches that restrict being able to build on the north and the south end of the property?
That's correct. No trees in the easements or really anything woody that can go for some shrubs as well.
Okay, that's what I thought, great. And a couple of questions for the applicant and comments, too. So, I really liked the elevations that, you know, you show for the courtyard homes, the two-story. I liked the pitch roof, the articulation you did with the gables above the entryways to add variety. So, I did like those. But for the three-story units, are the, and you said no rooftop decks, are the roofs accessible to those that would own the three-story units? Can the tenants get to the roof?
Currently, no. That's not the plan. The third-floor deck is just accessible from the second-floor deck with some exterior stairs,
Right.
or from inside the unit to the third floor. It will be open, but it won't be on the roof.
And you won't be able to, through the structure, be able to get to the roof?
No.
Okay. I would just encourage you to use, make it as green as possible, you know, lighter colors, whatever, so that you're reflecting the heat and the light as opposed to absorbing it with really dark colors.
Are you asking, are you suggesting that there should be roof access, or you don't want to see roof access?
See what?
My question is, are you encouraging people to be up there, or you don't want people up there?
Just to make sure that those decks don't absorb heat? I mean, not the decks, but the flat roofs don't absorb heat and add to the heat island effect within the city? That it just, they're more reflective and not dark and absorb heat and light, which make the units even warmer and hotter?
Okay.
Okay. So, HOA governance that you're going to have? This is obviously going to be a HOA-type of facility. So, and I wonder if we could request that in the project, I guess there are the covenants, the conditions, and the restrictions, that tenants for those 14 onsite guest parking spots, that a tenant can't park a recreational vehicle, you know, a boat, an RV, a camper, or a construction trailer in those 14 guest sites and use it as a third parking spot for the tenants? That they be secured for the guests?
Yeah, that's a good idea, and we will look for the HOA to govern that.
Okay, great.
We'd like to see that. Just for clarification, sorry, you mentioned tenants. I mean, these will be homeowners.
The owners, right.
Yep.
Wrong term. So, I appreciate the effort that you made to not impact the residential house to the north, that you set back that unit on the northeast corner. And when I was looking at the site plan, initially, I thought, well, why couldn't they take out that unit that's there? I think it's Lot 35. And put it back in the southwest corner? But it looked like from the site plan that the easement for the ditch eliminated that possibility.
That's correct. That is correct, yeah.
Great. So, just the last thing. I really liked this proposal. I thought they looked good. to some of the units in the Water Tower project that is already existing up on, uh, the other side of Allison at 54th, 55th. So, I was gonna ask you the price. You gave us those, and I had hoped that those prices for these, um, shared wall kind of homes would be a little bit lower than that, but you're saying these are gonna be luxury townhomes, so higher-end appliances and amenities and those kind of things?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep. It's, um, yeah, that, that's, that's our target price, and, and so we're really looking to do some luxury finishes, um, and, uh, I, I, I think there's a real niche in the market for these type of homes. Yep.
Okay. Well, you know the marketplace better than me, so, uh, you're pricing them what the market will bear.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin. Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I got you.
Go ahead.
All right. Uh, so, I, I'm gonna go back to, uh, Commissioner Hanon, specifically on the, on the, the ditches? So, we have, I'm, I'm just looking over the maps here, and we have three different ditches, and they're, do they all roll up into the one underneath the property? Is that how that works?
So, there's actually the bayou ditch, which I described when, used to run diagonal, and now it runs east and north. There's the roads middle ditch that runs along the north property line.
Okay.
That's existing, and will be piped along the north property, and then the Courtyard Graves that I mentioned before, which will provide a stubout right on the southeast corner.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, second thing, I, I appreciate the questions here, 'cause they answered a lot of what I had before, but I have one maybe silly question. There's a VTC, and it's referred to as a vehicle tracking control? What, what exactly is that?
That's during construction, so it's usually a, a 50 by 20-foot of gravel that construction, that's where the construction access is, and then the, the construction vehicles drive across that and get the mud off the tires before they hit the public street.
That makes sense. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffith.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I have a couple of questions with regard to the open space, the park. I think it's a, it's a great addition. I think it's a good amenity. Uh, I wondered if you might tell me a little bit about the, the underground detention? Is there a slope on the park, or is it completely graded flat, or what are we looking at there?
That's for me.
Sure.
Um, yeah, the, the park slopes gently, like about 2%, just, uh, for normal grass, minimum slopes to get the drainage away, um, so it won't pond there, and the idea is, is that way there's not some standing water or, you know, intermittent water as the storms occur, so that it is a usable park 100% of the time. So, the underground storage is buried pipes underground that hold the storage, and then they'll release it at a normal rate that a normal detention pond would.
Okay.
That answers your question?
Yeah, that's, that's good. And then the other question is sort of regards to the amenities available in the park, uh, park benches, things like that, that would encourage people to walk by and sit and kind of enjoy the, the open space. Are these things that are planned, or?
Yeah, we've planned them. We did, we, um, we, we, at, at minimum, we'd like to have some, some park benches there. This underground detention is, is, is quite an expensive option. Um, there, there are much more affordable options, but we really wanted to make this park a park where you could go and picnic, you go and kick a ball around, and, um, and so we wanted to get, we didn't want any standing, standing water there. So, at, at least some, some park benches, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be good, and the other thing I would encourage strongly is a station for, um, for dog bags.
Okay.
Because I figure you're probably gonna have about 75, 80 residents or, uh, homeowners, and there're probably 20, 30 dogs hiding in that mess.
Right.
So, something to keep in mind.
Commissioner Connell.
This is probably an obvious answer, but just a qualification. In reference to the city and, uh, and the applicant, nor the city has been able to contact anyone associated with the Courtyard Graves and Hughes, Hughes ditch. It's obvious that that would probably be contacted before the final development plan, or?
Yes, and, um, we've sent out the notices to all the, the addresses that we've had on file, and, um, by default, the city, um, ditch engineer has authority to review the plans, so we've been in contact with them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wolfslaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, one question about snow storage on-site. Have you thought about where snow will be stored? Will this be plowed as part of the community, or just curious how that's been addressed or will be addressed?
We haven't come up with the, the plan for the HOA and the covenants yet, but, um, it will be a private street, so privately maintained, and, um, we will make sure we, we.
Yeah, I would encourage you to take a look at that, and I would also echo, um, the comments about amenities in the park, you know, the park benches and pet waste stations, that kind of thing.
Definitely, definitely.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Just real quick, I'll, I'll, just a couple of points. To Mr. McGee's, uh, question about the landscaping, the number was transposed. It's 172 caliper inches on-site versus the 127 in the report. And then we, uh, as far as the Courtyard Graves ditch, we even went so far as to find the information from the state with the last known address, and we still did not get in contact with anybody.
Thank you. Mr. Hanon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move that Z2017-0001, the residence at Allison Park rezoning from City of Arvada R1, one and two family residence, to PUDR, Planned Unit Development Residential, 11.1 dwelling units per acre located at 5219 Allison Street, be recommended to City Council for approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on page 10 of the staff report.
Is there any discussion of the motion? I'd like to, to voice my concern over the parking. Um, I share Mr. Hanon's, um, concern. We go down to the Water Tower pretty frequently, um, to visit friends, and we find it very, very difficult to find a place to park. And, um, I, for one, do not find off-site, on-street parking to meet what I believe is a criteria in the Land Development Code for on-property guest parking. And so, um, I would offer the friendly amendment that we, um, we make a condition of approval that we, that they provide the 18 spaces on-site as required by the Land Development Code.
That, that would be a acceptable amendment.
Thank you. Any further discussion of that motion?
Chairman Owens, I don't believe that that particular, that we're doing the zoning right now.
Okay, so should we do that as part of the plat?
That would be part of the PDP.
PDP.
So, for purposes of the rezoning, I guess I would ask for you to table your friendly amendment for now.
I'll do so, then. So, we're gonna vote on the zoning as it is? Any further discussion? Nope. Seeing none, all members, please vote. Oops, sorry. Now, please vote. I see, uh, seven yeses and zero no's, so that is approved. Mr. Hanon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that PDP 2017-0001, the residence of Allison Park, Preliminary Development Plan located at 5219 Allison Street, be recommended to City Council for approval, subject to the conditions stated in the staff report, item one, page 13. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on pages 10, 11, 12 of the staff report.
Thank you. Um, then I will now offer the same amendment, that we require the 18 visitor, guest parking on-site. Excellent. Thank you. Any further discussion?
You know, I would just point out, uh, Chairman Owens, the purpose of a, the reason why we're going on a PUD is 'cause it's not going to specifically fit in with all the different criteria. That's the justifications they provided for going in the PUDR and for not meeting all the requirements of the LDC, one of those being the, uh, off-street parking. So, just a reminder to the board in why we go through a PUD process.
Yes, sir. I think I appreciate that. I, I am just concerned about the impact on our, on the neighborhood with moving those, that parking off onto the street. Uh, any further discussion? Ms. Wolfslaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would agree with you, um, that I can see the reasoning for zoning this PUD, uh, for some of the other variances that have been requested, but I would also support your, um, amendment to the motion to add the on-street parking.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfslaw.
Mr. McGee.
So, a question for staff and maybe the applicant. The discussions that you had to modify the 18 required to 14, when it looked like, you know, near the park, you might be able to add one or two more, what were those discussions centered around and?
Mr. McGee, we're, we're in discussion with the, uh, the commission now. We're not, we're not in a time where we should be asking questions of the staff.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all members, please vote. There are five yeses and two no's. Those no's are Mr. McGee and Ms. Connell. Mr. Hanon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that PP 2017-0001, the residence at Allison Park Preliminary Plat located at 5219 Allison Street, be recommended to City Council for approval, subject to the conditions stated in the staff report, item one, page 13. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on pages 12 and 13 of the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Hanon. Is there any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all, oh, Ms. Connell.
I just have a question. Since we voted on the change and not the change, um, it's, what we're voting for is that this PP 2017-0001 without the changes for the parking?
Yeah, I, I think it would probably be good to associate that with the preliminary plat as well, because it, that would potentially change the preliminary plat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanon, would you accept the?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, then we're, uh, gonna vote on the plat as it is, with the exception that, uh, we'll have 18 guest spaces on-site. Any further discussion? Nope. All members, please vote. There's seven yeses and zero no's. All right. Let's see. So, be sure to check with the staff, um, when this item will go to council, and thank you, um, and thank all the citizens for being here tonight. Staff, are there any items for the, uh, commission to consider?
Uh, yes. Your next meeting will be September 5th, and we have two sets of items. One is, uh, Beg Industrial, that's an annexation and a rezoning at 40, uh, 4927 Allison, so another Allison Street, and, uh, Wild Grass Commercial, a preliminary development plan that's at, uh, 87th and Indiana. And one last item is, as you know, we are starting through the process of reevaluating the Land Development Code, and we're putting together an advisory committee, uh, for that project, and we are hoping to get, uh, two members of the planning commission as part of that advisory committee, uh, since this will be, you know, closely tied to what, what work you do, and obviously, all of you will be involved, but we thought two people on that working group would be handy to have. Uh, so we would be looking for, for two folks, if we have some volunteers. Um, the first meeting of that advisory group will be September 14th, and we anticipate about six meetings of this advisory, six to eight meetings over the, uh, two-year period. So, it's not a huge commitment, but some commitment.
How about we have, uh, one, one new member and one, um, senior member? So, Ms. Connell and Mr. Griffith? Would that be all right? Acceptable?
I'd just like to let everybody know I will not be able to make the next meeting, for what it's worth. I'll be out of town.
Thank you. Anything else? No? We're adjourned.